Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you join me in prayer please? Supreme Architect of the universe, may I invoke thy blessing at this time, and this meeting thus be conducted in peace and closed in harmony. Amen. Well, good evening everyone and welcome to the Thursday, June 26, 2014 Public Business Meeting of the Allegheny County Commissioners. With this mic, I feel like it's last week at open mic night, and so if I go into song or I go into some comedy routine, please remind me that we're here as a commissioner, not as a comedian.
Sure they will. Sure they got names, maybe.
Okay, alright. I'd like everyone to stand please, because we have Remington Crabtree here, who is going to sing your old grand, your grand old flag. He is from Flitztown Elementary School, and... Mr. Crabtree, how are you sir? I will turn this mic over to you sir.
(singing) Yeah, I'm a flying flag, yet forever in peace may you wake. You're the young love, the land I love, home of the free and the brave. Every heart beats true, wonder red, white, and blue, but there's never a coast or flag. What should all the great and thee forgot? Keep your eye on the grand old flag. The grand old flag, you're a flying flag, and forever in peace may you wake. You're the young love, the land I love, home of the young brave. Every heart beats true, wonder red, white, and blue, but there's never a coast or flag. What should all the great and thee forgot? Keep your eye on the grand old flag.
Well, what a good job! Thank you sir, I really appreciate that. What a wonderful job. You know, America's in good hands with a young man like Remington coming up. That's wonderful sir, thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda this evening?
No sir.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve our June 5, 2014 Public Business Meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, say the phrase saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, under the report of the President, we'd like to make a presentation to Old Town Fire Department, that we could have... Who are we gonna have to present the flag to? Where's Dennis? Come on up here Dennis please. Mallory? That's right. I'm gonna hold this, Dennis here, Billy, I get on the other side of Creed. Dennis, you're on the outside. One of the, one of the things that's been a proud tradition that this Board of County Commissioners has been, is to present the county flag to our fire and rescue, as well as our town and municipalities. One of the things that we witnessed as we got into office, that we didn't see this blue flag flying proudly at as many places, so we opened up the coffers, looked in the closet, and found lots of flags, and has been making presentations. So, what I would like to do is turn it over to Commissioner Brody and Commissioner Valentine. Commissioner Brody, of course, is a fifth generation Allegheny Countyan, and he'll probably talk about maybe coal, and since Bill Valentine is old as five generations, he'll talk about the history of Allegheny County. So, first of all, Commissioner Brody.
Okay, on our flag were depicted several things here that pull back to our natural industries with, or natural resources, which drove our industry in Allegheny County, our coal cars, representing the western end of the county, and our industry, which represented all throughout the county. They was vitally important when coal was discovered in this region in the 1780's, which drove the railroad here and put the canal up through here. So Bill, if you would please sir.
Okay, if you look at the flag, this black symbol in the middle depicts the hand on a compass, and it's pointing west, and that's people moving westward is what caused Carmel to grow, because the natural gap in the mountain can arrows. Of course, 1789, not my birthdate, no, you can guess, but the birth of the county, wheat chucked honoring our farming heritage, which was large in the eastern part of the county, still is in some areas. Here, we've got the symbol for the tollhouse, that was Long Route 40. This symbol here is supposed to represent a wheel or a tire honoring the transportation, or it also could be an aerial view, looking down at Commissioner McKay, this midlife on there. Picture of the canal boat, which worked hand in hand with the coal industry, that's the way they shipped the coal towards the east, our smokestack industry, of course, the church steeples, anybody that comes over Marcus Mountain early in the morning, that's the first view they have down the hollow of Carmel, and then of course, the mountains, we're definitely surrounded by mountains here in Old Town, Green Ridge Forest, so everything on this flag symbolizes something that caused this county to grow and prosper.
So on behalf of the county commissioners, Dennis, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to meet here today, but more especially, we thank you for your own personal services, as well as the other volunteers here in Old Town, and those who continue the community spirit alive in Old Town. So thank you very much sir, we appreciate it.
And we'd be proud to see this flying at summer festivals.
That's right.
We'll see. It's not weatherproof.
Oh yeah!
Hey, their cheap one get you another one.
Thank you Dennis. Alrighty gentlemen, moving right into the proclamation part of our meeting tonight. I don't know if anybody knows, but this month is Arthrographosis Awareness Day, and how do I do? How do I do guys? Arthrographosis, maybe? Somewhat? Alright, they've had me work on this, the pronunciation of this word, and they ended up giving me someone to listen on the phone, and the person had a British accent. Arthrographosis, so, but more especially, why don't we have Carter Fetter and family here to explain exactly what that is, please?
Thank you for recognizing arthrographosis awareness in Allegheny County.
We want to thank you for letting us come today and explain this to everybody. His grandfather Mike McGee is gonna explain a little bit, and his therapist right right here, he's gonna explain a little bit of it too, so.
Good evening, my name's Mike McGee, also known as Pappy Mike. I can't pronounce his name, I really can't, I think this therapist is gonna explain more. Basically, I just wanted to hit a few lines of like, a few minutes ago, I was sitting in a chair, I took ten steps to come up here. Not everyone has that privilege or luxury of making that ten steps. My grandson, many years ago, went through, his mother went through a tough pregnancy, Holly likes her sleep, she started off by being hospitalized at Bruton Memorial from August to November, she got plenty of sleep, she couldn't get out of bed. Anyway, here tonight, I'll hit a little more on that later, here tonight, during the 90's, I was a big Ross Perot fan, and he had many sayings, but I think it educated a lot of us on how government works and how it doesn't work. And tonight, I'd like to say that one of Ross's speeches was, that we elect our officials to serve us. Tonight, these gentlemen, our commissioners, brought the government to us. We thank you so much for that. I live in Corriganville, same as Old Town, we have a fire company, convenience store and a bar, but we're still on the same page, but tonight, these guys brought the government to us, and that's the way it should be. My wife, several months ago, applied on a higher state level, but as you know how a lot of our state leadership's been, we'd heard nothing back. These guys took the time to do this, and it's just hard to explain how we feel as part of Carter's group for creating this, and I wish you gentlemen the best of luck this fall, because this leadership that I've seen the last four years, I'd say a hundred percent of what you tried to do might not have worked, but you sure get an A+ for that. Thank you. Anyway, over the years, when Carter was first born, he had this fortune where his leg was up like this, like he's crossing his heart, and we first looked like, oh my goodness. But his nanny, my wife Darlene, you definitely went her to your side, she wasn't gonna take the no for the answer. Myself being a Shriner, well, Commissioner McKay, we knew there was hell, we reached back to Shriners Hospital in Philadelphia, and Carter's been a patient there for quite a few years. He's went through more operations than probably four or five people sitting in here doing a lifetime. He has a desire that I've never seen before. He started off, I remember one time around Christmas time, he had an operation, he was in a body test, correct me if I'm dead here down. Carter loved sports, his dad Tony was a great athlete, played this orphan making professional baseball, so Tony was always getting work at it. It was Christmas time, we're sitting on the couch, and we had a little basketball, Nerf ball, whatever. Anyway, Carter sat in shoe hoops, not get the ball, well about a half hour into it, ah, the ball rolled over here, and I was getting kinda tired, and I said, "Carter, you need to get, get," he goes, "I can't Papa, I can't walk." Think about them words, "I can't walk." Anyway, he went on, this time then for baseball, so guess what, Carter starts playing baseball, his dad would take him in and practice, and he wouldn't throw it underhand to him, he'd come overhand. Attend the baseball game one day, and I watched Carter, and a nice hit to the outfield. He got thrown at first base, he had a fixieator on his leg, and he got it down, that means a straight board, so basically only one leg was working going down first base. I think they should have called him safe, but that wouldn't have been terrible, I mean, that's part of some of the things that life deals us. And Mr. Commissioners, I think this young man might sit in your seat one day, he has a desire, I mean, there's no quitting there. Same way he has me going, he become a hunting buddy, he's an inspiration, do we cut him a slack? Nah. He can assemble a home, then shut the door and the glass come in, I yelled at him first, this way it's gotta be my Carter. But anyway, he's had many successful surgeries, he's come so far, through the help of the Shrine, and different organizations. A couple of things I'd like to mention, if you walk in these people's shoes, the parents, the children, maybe getting out bed three o'clock in the morning to go to Philadelphia at the Shriners Hospital, getting home late that night, I say God bless his parents to have children like this. Holly and Tony is the most remarkable people I've ever seen with this, with several appointments, therapies, Holly can't have a regular child, and most of us know that it takes two breadwinners to make things work this day and age. Morton's is very good working with Holly, so that she can get some hours through the week. Chick-fil-A is very good with allowing fundraisers there, so that we can donate to the Transportation Shrine, Transportation Run and Algon Shrine. Many other people, Jim Polin here has drove Carter on how many trips to Philadelphia. Jim had to hang it up, but we sure appreciate what he did. I don't know, basically in prison, played in, back in the 80's, the Oak Ridge Boys had a song that still sticks with me, "Thank God for Kids." Last line, they say when you get down on your knees tonight, thank God above for what he's done for you, I hope they'll be alright, thank God for kids. Thank you all very much, Mr. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, and God bless you all and God bless America.
Well, my name's Rick Malley, I'm a physical therapist, I currently work at Progressive Physical Therapy, but I was working back at a local hospital when I first had the opportunity to work with Carter. As a physical therapist, we work with a lot of conditions, both acquired and congenital, arthrographosis, just a, um, arthrographosis being one of those congenital anomalies, so it's an acquired condition, so Carter was born with these joint tightnesses. Some, you may have come across the word on clubfoot, these are different kinda joint anomalies that are commonly associated. A lot of times will lead to a lot of different orthopedic surgeries, and then myself, a lot of physical therapy treatment is necessary for these folks as part of their kinda long haul recovery. So my first encounter with arthrographosis myself actually came through meeting Carter and his family. When I first met him, he was a little over a year of age, he had very significant tightness throughout his legs, his trunk, his neck, and he was not walking at that time, and his doctors and surgeons really didn't give him too great of a chance to walk. But yeah, with, through a lot of knowing this, we proceeded with treatment, and with a lot of hard work, dedication, both with Carter, both with family, a lot of, you know, blood, sweat, and tears, as you say. He's not only walking, as you just heard, he's running, he's playing ball, he's playing with his peers, and if you ask Carter, he's just as normal as he is. And that's the inspirational thing with Carter, he's a great ambassador, his dedication, his work, he's a great ambassador for, to raise awareness for this condition, and to comment on some of the words you said as well, it is, it's a life change, God does choose people for certain things, and not only Carter, but your whole family are just incredibly inspirational, all the hard work and dedication that is necessary to really have good recovery from this, I mean, I've only been a small piece in the puzzle of this recovery, it's kinda happened in the clinic, it's happened at home, but all that hard work is really, he's made some leaps and bounds, and I can't wait to see what he does next. Thank you.
We have one more thing, and Carter's gonna help me. We have a little bit of a thank you for each one of you, the commissioners. This one's for Mr. Valentine, if you can raise your hand to Carter, raise which one you are. This one is for Mr. Brody. And this one is for Mr. McCaffrey, we can't, sorry. And now you guys can officially be part of Carter's crew.
I knew I shouldn't have had that double cheeseburger today. Well Holly and Carter, we have a presentation for you as well, we'd like to read this proclamation, so if we could have you come up please? Yes, we are. You know, I had done a couple of the trips, only a couple compared to Mr. Polin, but I believe one or two times I took you guys up, so that's a very blessing, so. Come on in here, so we got it all here, if we may? Okay, we've got this presentation for you. There you go buddy. It says here, Allegheny County Government Proclamation. Whereas arthrographosis multi, multiplex, commonly known as AMC, I'm glad they shortened it for me for AMC.
Me too.
Occurs in approximately one in every 3,000 live births in the United States, and though, although AMC fortunately is non-progressive, AMC does not yet have a cure. And whereas AMC is associated with the gestational period, and at the birth of newborns lack the normal range of motion in one or more joints, and whereas no two people with AMC are affected exactly the same way, those with only limbs affected, those with limbs and trunks involved, those with limbs, head, face, and organ involvement, and those with limb involvement and severe central nervous dysfunction. And whereas AMC is not a roadblock, it is simply a different path, and those with AMC can benefit from the medical treatment provided by a wide range of specialists, and become productive individuals in their community. Now therefore, we, as the Allegheny County Commissioners proclaim Monday, June 30, 2014, to be Arthrographosis Awareness Day in Allegheny County, and encourage all citizens to wear blue and become knowledgeable about AMC by visiting wwwamcsupport.org. Now Carter is signed by all three county commissioners, and has the great seal of Allegheny County affixed. Thank you very much for making us aware buddy, you're doing a wonderful job, and you make us proud. Jim? How many trips have you taken to any of the hospitals with Shriners?
A hundred and sixty something.
A hundred and sixty plus trips, this man has donated his time by driving young men and young women with opportunities at the Shrine Hospitals have been able to, let's give Jim a round of applause. Okay Commissioners, item number two is the 2014 Allegheny County Comprehensive Plan Update. Mr. David Dorsey is our acting planning coordinator, will give the presentation.
Good afternoon.
My has to be on.
Oh, that's tricky, alright. Well as you know Commissioners, the county hasn't had a countywide comprehensive plan adopted since 2002, and starting two years ago with SMS planning and design, and the help of a lot of county agencies and departments, we have managed to pretty much finish a comprehensive plan. I'm gonna just explain basically what it's composed of. This is, by the way, this is our cover, it's got a picture, a little bit of each planning region of the county in the letters. The first three chapters of this are preliminary chapters that explain state planning requirements, historic development patterns, and population statistics, it's not too exciting. Then we have seven chapters that are called elements, that are background information for the plan. There's one for housing that deals with housing rehabilitation, senior housing, blight, and junk abatement. There's a transportation chapter that packs up various transportation improvement priority lists, rail transportation changes, mass transit trails, and state highway projects. A public facilities chapter details plans and recommendations for healthcare, senior care, libraries, fire and rescue, police, solid waste and recycling, telecommunications systems, and improving services to the county residents. Each chapter, at the end of each chapter, there are recommendations, we start with goals and end up with recommendations at the end of each chapter, all told, there are more than forty pages of recommendations in this book. Mineral Resources deal with coal production and surface mining reclamation, quarrying, the brick industry, and other mineral resources. Sensitive Areas is based on state environmental law enacted in 1992, and it deals with limitations presented by steep slopes, floodplains, river buffers, endangered species, erodible soils, wetlands, and geological features. A chapter on agriculture, forestry, and non-mineral resources contains information about prime agricultural land and forest industry and soils. An economic development chapter looks at the past and present and future employers in the county, it deals with industrial parks, business retention tourism, and includes a study of what local industrial sectors are affected by the national economy, and would do well in Allegheny County. So these chapters all come together in the last, last part, it's Chapter 11, it's about land use. And this chapter outlines existing and future land use in the county planning regions, and suggests where future land, future changes in zoning should be made. Also, it deals with infill development. So on behalf of Planning and Zoning Commission, it's my pleasure to forward the accepted and approved 2014 Comprehensive Plan for your review. Following a lengthy review process, the Planning Commission approved this plan at their May 21st, 2014 hearing. We've got, forward a copy of the plan to each Commissioner, and included a recommendation for its adoption.
What's next in the process David?
Next in the process is the July 10th hearing, being held by the county commissioners in room 100 of the county office building, 701 Kelly Road.
If somebody wants to review that document?
Oh boy. I actually made tabs that say www.gov.algenet.org, I'll put them up on the front table. If you go to that page online, at the bottom of the page, you can click and download this whole thing, you don't have to carry this book around. It's pretty much readable with Adobe product, is that right? And you can blow up the maps that are in here that show land use, there are so many maps in this, I gotta say, the county agencies really helped put this together, the county GIS staff, part of the public works helped greatly in proofreading this thing for us, it took a long time to get through all these changes we've made. We had it out online for about a year and a half, and we got a lot of comments, we tried to address them all, in fact, in order to be open and transparent, we have a section in the back of the book that includes everyone's online and mailed, and I guess verbal comments. And we've tried to respond to all of them, show how this thing has been changed over the last two years.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Dorsey.
Okay. I'll put these tabs with the email address up here on this table.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, moving right into the action part of our agenda. Item number three is the Old Town Summer Fest. Now this is to authorize, what does that say, a hundred thousand? No, a thousand from the Community Productions Promotions account for the 2014 Old Town Summer Fest Community Event. It will be held on June 28th and 29th, 2014. So, gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept, to make a motion for this authorization. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number four is the Fire and EMS Financial Accountability Study. Do you want to award? Mr. DeVore. Mr. DeVore is our Department of Emergency Services Director. And he and I were twins at birth.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, if you recall, and for many in the room are well aware of the fact that over the last few years, we've had some very high-profile issues in fire and EMS services relating to financial accountability within their respective departments. Earlier this year, the Commissioners authorized the release of an RFP that would look to study the financial accountability practices within those volunteer organizations and make specific recommendations on how we can improve one of those accounting practices with ultimately the goal of giving confidence in the public that their monies and their contributions are well-directed when they go to the volunteer fire community. We released the RFP. As a result of that RFP, we received free RFP responses back. They ranged in price from $16,000 is the low bid to $32,000 is the high bid. And tonight, Commissioners, we're seeking your authorization to award the contract to the low bidder of Turnbull, Hoover, and Cale of Cumberland. They were low bid and that determination was made by myself, Jason Bennett from Department of Finance, as well as Mr. Levin from County Attorney's Office.
Commissioners, any questions? No? Gentlemen, I'd like to move that we award the Fire and EMS Financial Accountability Study to Turnbull, Hoover, and Cale. Is there a second? Second has been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Richard, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. But as a result of this action, not as a direct result of this action, but here in the very near future, the Emergency Services Board has to deliver some very difficult news and information to the Clarisville Fire Company. If you could bring us up to date on the position of the EMS Board with respect to the situation there.
Yes, sir. As a result of issues that were occurring inside the Clarisville Fire Department, and I believe the State's Attorney has already taken action against those individuals involved. Emergency Services Board, a board appointed by the Commissioners, with representation from the Emergency Services Community as well as the public. We've been working with the Clarisville Fire Department for probably eight to nine months now in trying to restore the department to become a viable provider of fire and rescue services in Allegheny County. Unfortunately, Commissioners, tonight, I will be the bearer of bad news. As we speak, Sheriff Craig Roberson is delivering the closure notice to the Clarisville Fire Department, will be placing them out of service. It's been a difficult decision for the Emergency Services Board to have representatives here. It was not a decision that we took lightly. We agonized over it for some time. However, with that being said, early on in this process, there was members within Clarisville who told us that specifically the best course of action would be to close the department. We provided that core group that wanted to try to reinvigorate the department an opportunity, we worked with them. And unfortunately, we're to a point where we can say that those efforts are failed. As a result of that, there will be no compromise fire and EMS protection in the area. That area will, as affected this evening, will be covered by the Michewaie departments. And then we'll be meeting with them in the very near future to look at long-term solutions for providing that response area and continuing to provide that protection.
Okay.
One more thing, Commissioners, if you would, a moment. Dick, also learned here within the last few hours, I got information from FEMA concerning our flood declaration. Will the town agree to, if you could bring us up to date on what we've learned on the federal and state orders?
Yes, sir. As a result of the storm that took place approximately two weeks ago, it was severe thunderstorms moved into the area. And by local gauges, reported that in excess of five inches of rain fell over the Cumberland, Bowling Green, Crescent Town area. And inundated that area with extreme flash flooding that was very significant. As a result of that, and as normally is the case with disasters of that nature, we responded the following morning. We had disaster assessment teams in the field collecting information on damage. The county has a damage threshold to qualify of $262,000. And ultimately, the infrastructure damage that we reported to our state office was $1.7 million. However, with that being said, the state also collectively has a damage threshold of close to $8 million. As a result of that, our damage assessments were combined with Washington County's damage assessments from the flash flooding they received in the Clear Spring area. Unfortunately, once again, the bearer of bad news, at least the FEMA declaration portion has been declined. Where we are in this process is that we've requested the state office to proceed with an application to the Small Business Administration, looking for opportunities for low-interest loans or potentially still grants to help with some of this recovery. The difficult thing in this process is that with flash flooding, without flood insurance, most of these losses will be uncovered. And in particularly, significant losses on behalf of the Crescent Town Fire Department totaling over $300,000. And the Calvary Christian Academy with losses estimated at $275,000. So with that being said, our work's not done. We will continue to work and try to bring some assistance to these individuals who were catastrophically affected by this rainstorm. Also, with that being said, we also continue to work with the approximately 175 residents who reported individual damage to their homes and properties and trying to see what additional assistance we can provide.
Dick, we would however like to get some good news from you this evening, if you don't mind, if you could leave the podium and if you could talk about our Alerting and Restriction Services Board and do the cover here.
Okay. Yes, sir. One of the things that we're moving forward with item 19 on the agenda, authorizing the Department of Emergency Services to reach out to a program called I Am Responding. It's a web-based application that we'll be implementing for our first responders. And it allows us to basically send alerting messages to cell phones, but at the same time, allow our responders to be able to either place a phone call, send a text message back that they're responding to this particular event. What it does is it enhances our situational awareness. It enhances the situational awareness of the incident commander when seen because at any given time, he knows what personnel resources are going to be made available to him. With that being said, Commissioners, item 19, we're asking for your blessing on that so that we can move forward with this program. And ironically, the good news in addition to this is we're not requesting any additional funds to make it happen.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. DeVore. All right, Commissioners, item number five is the Allegheny County Detention Center Renew ConMed Healthcare Management Incorporated Agreement. Captain Carter, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. Over the past several years, the Allegheny County Detention Center's needs have been met by ConMed Healthcare Services. We've had a very good working relationship with ConMed. We do exceptional job force, and a very effective agreement. We are asking that the contract be renewed for another year with ConMed. As you all know, during negotiations, negotiations are ongoing. So during the budget process, we asked for an amount of $947,229. We negotiated that down to $931,036, which is a $16,000 savings. Again, the increase we have asked for within this contract has been to increase the mental health professional detention center to an annual amount of $2,604, one additional R for mental health professionals. I'll try to be brief, we have a very large agenda tonight, so if you have any questions, we'll have to answer them if we need to.
Commissioners, any questions? Okay. Gentlemen, I'd like to move that we authorize the board of county commissioners to agree and renew the agreement with the ConMed Healthcare Incorporated. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. A roll call vote, Commissioner Valentine?
Aye.
Commissioner Brody?
Aye.
Commissioner McKay?
Aye.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Okay, gentlemen, item number six is the lease for the Old Town Solid Waste Disposable Site. Mr. Cale?
Evening, everyone.
Evening, sir.
We've had a five-year lease at the Lurkachrick Road. It's our solid waste facility that serves this community. The lease expires the end of this month. We requested to Mr. John Teeter to extend the lease for several years, the same price, $300 a month. Have you agreed to that? We're asking approval for that lease.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners?
Nope.
I'd like to entertain a motion that we accept the lease with the Old Town Solid Waste Disposable Site. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Cale, can you tell us about item number seven, please?
This is for the Allegheny College Technology Building. They did a study about three or four years ago. It's the oldest building on campus that renovated. The majority of it built 1975, in addition, 1992. They originally did a study, they wanted to do $21.5 million worth of improvements. The county generally pays around 30% of those. That would require $6.5 million. Working with our finance department, Jason Bennett, trying to work what we could afford and work with Allegheny College to look at their immediate needs and if they had, you know, if there's things we have to take care of and others things we'd like to take care of later. We've reduced that, both Adam Patterson and I have been to the college a number of times, we've worked with them to do. We've reduced that project to $2.5 million for now. And the county share of that would be $757,000. That would include an elevator. We would have addressed the ADA, which is the Disability Act of 1975. We did not have to address those issues. Now we're trying to make sure handicapped people can access all the facilities. We're also going to address the restrooms. And we're also going to upgrade the USTAC system, which is very old. And that would probably result in savings because we're a lot more efficient than we were in 1975. We've agreed to come back in August, Adam Patterson. We can call it again and look at the next phase of this project between three or four years from now. This project only requires us to have money in 2016, which is not this fiscal year, of $48,000. And then 2017 will be $7,000 or $8,000, for sure. So we're asking here for approval with that.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Cale, where are you for that? I'd like to entertain a motion to accept item number seven, the Allegheny County Maryland Technology Building Phase One Financial Support. Is there a second motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, gentlemen, item number eight is the Allegheny County Board of Education Fiscal Year 2014 Budget Amendments. Mr. Randy Gutter, their Chief Business Officer, is here. Welcome, sir.
The Board of Education has requested a budget amendment that needs your approval.
Be brief, I'm Michael.
The Board of Education needs a budget amendment that requires your approval. Anytime that we overrun a budget category, we have to take it to you for your consideration. We hope that this would avoid something when we finish our audit. You know, you remember sometimes we're spending in a particular category. So early this year, we noticed there was going to be some expenditure overruns in some areas, the major one was special education. And that's due to the increased number of students requiring a non-public placement. And what that basically means is students in the system that have severe needs, whether they be physical, emotional, behavioral, things like autism, students are entitled under the federal law to receive a fair and appropriate education. And sometimes that must be in a facility, not in a public school building, but in a facility that charges for this service. And some of that cost is reimbursed by the state, but some of it has to be assumed by the local school system. So the budget amendment recognizes that there will be overspending in the special education area, but a lot of that will be reimbursed by the state. We also have overspending in the mid-level administration area. There is an expected retirement, there will be some vacation payouts, some sick time, that's not the entire amount. Because when we knew of the retirement, we shifted some personnel and paid them out of that category because that's what they did in preparation for this transition. So we're going to cover the overspending area that needs to be covered locally with fund balance. And that way, when we're done the audit, we have a true picture of which areas were overrun and which areas were approved under the budget. So approval of this amendment would not in any way impact county appropriation either currently or in the future.
Okay, Randy. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Gutter? Okay, gentlemen, I'd like to move that we accept the Allegheny County Board of Education Fiscal Year 2014 Budget Amendments. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right, your item number nine, too. Can't get away, or number nine, can't get away.
This item is with the fiscal year 15 budget. And as you know, back in March, you requested a budget request from the Board of Education, was submitted for your consideration. On June 5th, when the new budget was adopted, there was a level of appropriation to the Board of Education. That appropriation was less than what the Board of Education had requested. So we needed to make adjustments to our budget. And that's what is for you. So in addition, with the Board of Education, a lot of the adjustments are related to wanting to reduce the amount of fund balance that is used in the Board of Education budget. So in total, there was over $2.7 million of reductions in revenue and in the expenditures. So overall, the budget will be about a million dollars lower than the current year. And we've noted what the adjustment levels. So your acceptance of this will set the budget categories for the new budget that begins on Tuesday, July 1st.
Jason?
Yeah.
Commissioners, any questions for? Commissioners, any questions for either Randy or Jason?
Just one thing, on the expenditure category for the 2015 budget, you're cutting special ed by $263,000?
That's from the requested budget. Special education in total will increase $827,000 when you look at 15 budget.
We added to it, cost of cost.
That's correct. And if you look in the 15 budget, there's about a million dollar increase that's attributed to non-public placements. After meeting with special education folks, they believe that's going to continue in the future.
Gentlemen, any more? Okay. Okay, Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Allegheny County Board of Education Fiscal Year 2015 Category Adjustment. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Ms. Back Thomas, she's here to talk about item number 10, 2014 Miss Allegheny Scholarship Pageant.
Thank you. The Miss Allegheny County Scholarship Program provides young women the opportunity to earn additional scholarship money to pursue their educational goals while giving them an avenue to showcase their talents and also advocate for a cause that's of importance to them. Community service has always been a cornerstone of our program, and these young ladies are very active in community events and serve as role models for the year. You may have had opportunities with them, possibly at the Charities Training School, the March of Diet, March for Babies. There are just a couple of events in the community that they've been participating in. This is an exciting week for these young ladies as they compete for Miss Maryland and Miss Maryland's outstanding youth in Hagerstown. And we have much to be proud of of these young ladies in our community.
Yeah, we do. Under economic development with the new hotel that's going in Lavelle, we had one of the young ladies who, who not necessarily was invited to the event, but saw that it was going on and said she needed to be there in support. And so that was a nice addition there, that she thought that having a new hotel being built in Allegheny County was important on her behalf.
That was our Ms. Cumberland.
Ms. Cumberland, there you go. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion that we accept item number 10, authorizing $500 out of the community promotions account for the 2014 Miss Allegheny County Scholarship Pageant. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Everly, what do we have on our consent agenda, please?
Commissioners, thank you. Our agenda this evening, our consent is more than usual. It's been a few weeks since our last public meeting, and obviously, this is our last public meeting about the fiscal year, so there are maintenance items to take into consideration. So if you will bear with me as I walk through these items, items number 11, 12, and 13 deal with various void appointments. We have a vacancy on our Ethics Commission, and we are desiring to appoint hearing officers for both our gaming program and Classifying Forests Field Board. For full disclosure, James C. Everly Jr. is not related to me. So I'm just going to point that out. We have, thank you, appreciate you pointing that out. We have our annual kitchen safe motion from Jason Bennett to amend our 2014 fiscal year budget, where in addition to various operating adjustments, it includes our adjusting the budget to account for one-time pothole funding, school security, mental health appropriations, and the Safe Streets Initiative. Commissioners, we have a motion for tax payment for various real estate items that we do this time this year. We have a bid award, bid awards, rather, on the agenda this evening for our emergency services generator at the new sheriff's office building, a pickup truck for our recycling program, and the alerted subscription services that was discussed earlier by Mr. DeBoer. We also have a motion to extend the county's recycling agreement with Penn Mall Recycling for an additional year. And last but certainly not least, we have a resolution 14-16 on the agenda this evening, which offers a minor, very minor adjustment to the county's grain allocation table. That's it.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions for Sheriff Lee on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll move that we accept our consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Rudd, is there anything on your desk?
I have nothing.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioners, before I turn it over to you, I'd like to thank and acknowledge Mr. Dennis Mallory, as well as Roy Scrathree and Lo Mcraftree, and all the members of the Old Town Fire Department for their hospitality and their assistance this evening. We thank you very much. As Board of County Commissioners, we've tried to take the show on the road, and we're really, really glad that you were welcome, and we really appreciate you hosting our meeting here this evening. So, Commissioners, Commissioner Valentine?
Well, first of all, I do like to thank Old Town for hosting our meeting. As Mike said, we've been moving our meetings around to just about every community in Allegheny County now. We don't think it's fair to make people travel to Cumberland for all meetings. We try to get to as many communities as possible, and I look forward to your Summer Fest this weekend. I've been a proud sponsor of that event for probably 12, 13 years. I think it's great that you stay in touch with your history. Old Town is a fantastic town when it comes to the history of Allegheny County. So I look forward to this weekend.
Mr. Brody.
I want to thank you for having us down this evening. This was one of the best meetings that I've attended since I've been in office, and I also look forward to seeing us this weekend. Mike, I have a question for you. Do you think Oregonville would be interested in having a meeting, sir?
Sure, we would.
After the meeting, we'll get you contacted up here with Mr. Everly, and maybe sometime in late fall or early spring, we can make that happen.
To our pleasure.
Okay, sir, very good. But with that said, thank everyone for coming out here this evening, and I'll see everybody this weekend.
Okay, moving right into our constituents, we have four people that have signed up. First, we have Mr. Derek Hose. Derek, as you come up, just remind everyone of our five-in-five policy. We're not very strict about that, but we just try to be respectful to the other people that are speaking this evening. When you do come up to the podium, if you would please give your name and address for the record, we would appreciate it. It's all yours, Derek.
Hello, my name's Derek Hose, and I've lived in Old Town my whole life, and I'm speaking today to represent my community, which I'm very proud of. A couple of years ago, before we get started, we started Old Town Crime Watch, so I'd like my fellow members to stand up, just so we can see who's part of our... We've only had several meetings, so we make it small at this time, but I do have grandiose plans of growing and becoming an effective community member and the Crime Watch affecting our community in a positive way. Several years ago, we started with some four-wheelers, and four-wheelers sound very harmless. You know, when I was a kid, my friends rode the four-wheelers. Sometimes they rode them on the road. They might go a very short distance to ride their four-wheelers on a very appropriate place. However, this behavior has escalated to the point where the riding on the roads constantly now, and at all hours of night. Try, just imagine getting up at 5:45 in the morning, when you got a four-wheeler flying by your house at 2:00, 3:00 a.m., 30, 40 miles an hour, how loud that is, you just can't sleep. Not alone, I have four children, you know, one by the house, what if one of my kids walked across to get the mail? What if my pet goes out across the road? We have them not just on the road, but two side by side in both lanes, one up and down the road. They've been asked to stop, they don't. It's very frustrating. This has been going for several years, but what's unfortunate is, is in our area, this has resulted now in we have a lot of theft. And a lot of the thefts come to light because of the Crime Watch, because then we started finding out, not only because I stole them from, but my neighbor stole them from, but somebody out on this road was stolen from. So we have a list of lawn mowers, push motors, weed whackers, fire tanners, snow blowers, copper out of homes, scrap metal out of the backyard, numerous, numerous, numerous. I could go on. The list is 10 times longer than I mentioned, just because of time constraints. And not only theft, but bold theft, you know, people swing on porches, out of cars in the school lunch. You know, if you don't leave your car locked, someone's opening it up, going through it and taking anything in to get your hands on it. Two churches have been broken into, laptops have been stolen, just numerous thefts. Destruction of property. We don't have a lot in Old Town, we can take pride in our lion's field. A lot of people put a lot of time into fixing that field up so that we could have a community for our children, and these guys on the four-wheelers just destroy the place. And ask to stop, this is our community, continue. Beer bottles in the dugouts, graffiti tearing up the parking lots. And we've got good people here trying to fix these things continuously. And it's just very, very disappointing, because we actually had one event where somebody became involved in a physical altercation because of confronting them, gorgeous destruction. And since that, they get verbally harassed. There's been incidents where car doors have been knocked open, so when they woke up to go to work the next day, their car battery's dead. Things have been moved in people's drawers, just harassment. You know, I'm not touching you, but I'm messing with them constantly. We had an incident where a cat was ran over by one of these four-wheelers, and then the next day, they sat across in the ballfield and yelled, "Here kitty, 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 kitty", just messing with the people. So it's not just riding the four-wheelers, but it's turned into disrespect, delinquent, criminal behavior. And tonight, you know, I come home from work and my mailbox is smashed. Apparently, East Wilson Road got smashed, Crescent Mill Road got smashed. You know, it's just ongoing. It started maybe in the general downtown area of Pesca Street Cemetery Road, has escalated to Bear Hill, East Wilson, Braddock Trail, and now Crescent Mill. So it's continuing to get worse. The frustrations that I've heard through the Crime Watch is, is many people have called the police, and one, we have poor response times. So by the time someone gets there, the four-wheelers are put away. And it seems like when we call, within five, 10 minutes, the four-wheelers are turned off and put away because they already know the police are coming. So I don't know how that's happening, but we need some assistance in getting that problem fixed. When the police do come, it seems like we're more focused on telling us, which is the law-abiding citizen, what we can and can't do, and what the police can and can't do, rather than working with us to fix the problem. So as a result of that, I hope more members will join us, because my philosophy is, the police are far away. They're not going to fix the problem for us. We have to fix our problem. We're going to start educating the public, wanting to call the police every time something happens. We're going to educate people on keeping their stuff out, turning lights on, how to make themselves safer. These are some of the goals of our group. Provide support for one another. Some people are scared. A lot of people are scared. So if you're not strong enough to call, one of the Crime Watch members will call for you. And we're going to start showing up for one another. We're hoping to build a team that can start patrolling areas. And we have, on Facebook, we started the Crime Watch, and also emailing us so that we can kind of let one another know where things are being stolen, how they're being stolen, and have better communication with one another so we can help appropriately identify these people so the police can't get involved. I think the biggest thing, though, is the frustration. I hear community members making threats if I catch them on my property, if I catch them in my house, if I see them. That's going to end badly, you know? Four-wheelers. I hear, I tell my coworkers, or somebody, "Ah, it's a kid riding a four-wheeler. It's a 20-year-old riding a four-wheeler. It's not that bad." Well, when they run over my kid, and you know, I hear other people say, "When they hit my kid, there's going to be something to pay." And I understand that feeling. And unfortunately, what I'm afraid is going to happen is, something really bad is going to happen in our community because we didn't get the support we needed. So I'm here today asking for support from you guys. How can we improve response times? Because the one incident that was called on theft out of the car, two days later, a police officer showed up. Now, within that two-day timeframe, that person and some other large men confronted the individuals and got their stuff, did very badly. And a lot of people have been going to jail, and unfortunately, it would have been people who were frustrated because the system is not helping them. Mike made the comment that government's supposed to provide for people. I may have misquoted that, I apologize. But I think that's very, very important to our community. We're going to do what we need to, to handle this appropriately. We're going to develop the Crime Watch that is going to keep our hands off, report incidents, educate our people, and protect our people. But we need to improve response times, and we need action to be taken when we come. Not feel like we've done something wrong because we called the police. We've been, basically feel like we're low on the priority list, and it's a waste of the police time to come out here because there's nothing for them to report if they can't physically catch them. Then let's physically catch them, because it's going to escalate to the point where good people are going to get hurt, or good people are going to do something and land themselves in jail, because they're trying to do the right thing, but we don't have the support to do the right thing. And I don't mean that to sound like a threat, because my goal with the Crime Watch is to do the right thing and for our community, take our community back. Danielle, did I miss anything?
I missed a lot.
Okay. One last thing I just want to point out is that we're an aging community. When I first started joining this, none of this affected me. Other than my mailbox being smashed last night, I've had no negative consequences. But where this is all going on is my mom and dad, my aunt and uncle. I grew up on Pesca Street. Mr. and Mrs. Riggman are like family to me. Barb and Mitzi are sitting there. And it's growing, it's getting worse, and we need help. So I ask you guys, what can you do to help us?
Okay, have you met with the sheriff?
We have asked for support from the sheriff. We have called, we have asked for meetings, and we have gotten little to no support.
If you give me your name and contact number, I will talk with Sheriff Robertson. I guarantee you, we will have a sit-down meeting with the sheriff. We've helped set up Crime Watch in all communities. They're all handling this type of problem. So we'll sit down with Sheriff Robertson, and maybe he can come up with some ideas. I live in Little Orling, I don't have a downtown area, but it's a community like this, much like this. One thing we did, we got, some people got together and they went around to every home they could find, and they took down manufacturer, model number, serial number, everything that everybody had, she put the hunter's name, and got weed eaters, grills, everything they could. And that way, the police department, if they had something they go on, they just arrested a gentleman on Pesca Street not that long ago. And the only way they could actually do it, by luck, they had serial numbers from a couple pieces of equipment. It ended up being, and here you are, didn't belong there. So if you have that type of information, it's much easier for law enforcement to do something. So if you have your contact information, I guarantee you, we will have a meeting with Sheriff.
I would appreciate that, because I think without your guys' support, we're not going to have any assistance, because we've attempted all those avenues. We've gotten to where we're so frustrated, because we've exhausted all those. So we definitely need your support to make it happen, otherwise, it's just going to be a felt like waste of time.
Okay, Derek. Thank you, sir.
Good job, Derek.
Good. (applause) Dennis Mallory?
Derek Coverd.
Derek Coverd, good. Daniel Bender?
He got it.
He got it? Okay, great. Mr. Jerry Wisner?
Thank you, thank you. My name's Jerry Wisner, I'm from New Creek, West Virginia. I'm a commissioner from Mineral County. And after sitting here tonight, I can see that your job's not any easier than mine. Highlight of it is, is when you can honor a young man like Carter and present him with a certificate. What I wanted to talk tonight, I guess, is just directly to the Commissioners, and it's about the autocross at Cumberland Airport. I want to commend Mr. Brody, because he's done a great... I want to commend Mr. Brody, because he's done a great job in leading the authority at the airport. I sat him on a couple of the meetings, and I was very proud of the way he was handling everything. But I'm not in agreement with the decision that was made by the airport authority in not granting allowance for the autocross to continue to the airport. I realize it's not a big financial windfall for Mineral County. We hardly reap anything out of it, but it actually does enhance our area. It has some historical content. It's been going on for years and years, except for, I think, about 13-year hiatus, when they didn't raise. But as far as historical content, Roger Pinsky raced there years and years ago. Carol Shelby raced there years and years ago. And I was hoping that the Allegheny County Commission would work with me, or work with our Commissioners, maybe we could overturn this verdict. If it's, you know, we'll work through all the issues, if it's an insurance issue, we'll revisit that, but I was hoping that we could work together to maybe overturn that decision. That's basically all I have. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Sir, thank you for your comments, sir. Thank you. And we added one more person on here, went from four to five. Champ Zumbrough. Champ?
Thank you for adding the owner.
No, no problem. Are you going to be speaking this weekend?
This weekend? I'm going to be singing songs.
You're going to be singing songs. I have your CD.
You do?
I still have it. You gave it to me early on.
Thank you. That means I've sold five of them. Thank you for putting me up there, because I didn't get that sign.
No problem, sir.
Every time. I'm just going to keep this very short, this regards to the comprehensive plan. And I understand it's going to be scheduled for July 10th now, or the hearing, that's a hearing, right? And so, of course, you know my concerns, it's no secret about this going to Eastern Island County, tariff and run, and so forth. So, but as you know, there's overwhelming comments against, from citizens, against tariff and run. And I've been going to many public meetings for the past eight years, and it's roughly about, I mean, it's not scientific, but it's very large opposition against tariff and run. And at this last planning and zoning meeting, there is no one that spoke in favor of it. The only person that spoke in favor at the meeting was lawyer for the developer. And nothing was changed, everything went through. So, I talked to individuals, such as yourselves, and I understand there's some kind of document that states that the Allegheny County Government has some kind of agreement with the developer, that they can't, to keep the development of tariff and run as it was in 2012 and in 2000, don't change any language, no worries.
There's agreement not with the developer. And I'll let Mr., when you're finished, I'll let Mr. Rudd give the exact.
Okay, yes, I appreciate that. Well, here's the thing, I don't want to belabor it now, but at the hearing, I would like, I have put in for a public information request form, just put it in yesterday, and if the meeting's July 10th, which I didn't know until just today, then I want to have that information. So, I was wondering if you could expedite my public information request, because I understand sometimes it's 20, 30 days before you do some.
Not under this administration is it 20, 30 days. Matter of fact, The Times News can talk, Matthew can talk to them early on in the administration. He had a request about 10 o'clock in the morning, and by 2:00 in the afternoon, he had about this many emails, so.
In fact, Champ, if you come to my office tomorrow, let's say 10 o'clock?
Well, I, well, I'll tell you after the meeting, I can't make that meeting.
You can be there tomorrow?
I can meet you at Old Town, I'll be, you're coming to Old Town, yeah.
For Summer Fest?
Yes.
I'll hand you the document.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. And then the other, just one last request. I understand the meeting's at 3:30 for the hearing. I was wondering if you could make the meeting at 5:00, when more people can attend, when they're not working.
The only problem that we have, we'll take that into consideration, but the only thing that we have is, we have our regular meeting at 5:00 as well. So, we've got a big day for that day. We'll take that into consideration. Mr. Rudd, would you give a clarification on this agreement, and then Mr. Valentine will have that to you at Old Town. If there's anybody else that would like a copy of that agreement, that's no problem, we'll get that to you. So, Mr.?
It's not a simple answer to it. It's a simple question, it's not a simple answer. There's litigation involving the Maryland Department of Plan, the Maryland Department of the Environment, the Allegheny County and the tariff and run development. There was a settlement conference in Frederick a couple of years ago now, and at that conference, it was an agreement among all parties, including the state of Maryland, which they immediately keep forgetting, in which the litigation was put on hold. It was dismissed, because frankly, the state of Maryland wants to buy tariff and run, and they would not enter into negotiations with the developer as long as they were being sued. So, the litigation was put on hold to give the state and the developer an opportunity to negotiate a possible purchase. They are still talking. They've been talking for almost two years, have not yet come to a conclusion about pricing, et cetera. The litigation was put on hold, the deal being that the sale did not occur by a certain date, the litigation could start up, and everything would stay thus same, we go back to status quo, so nobody gained or lost because of the hiatus in the litigation. One of the things that was a constant, and has been the constant for the last two comprehensive plans, is Mr. Dorshkin, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the area around tariff and run was identified for future development. That's the way it is now, it's the way it's been since 1994, maybe before. Is that about right today?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, whatever. The state is requesting that we change the comprehensive plan for the area where tariff and runs are supposed to be located. That's a change. That's contrary to what they promised at the settlement conference, what everybody else agreed to. That's what they're asking the change to be. We're not proposing to change anything, but to leave the status quo done until the developer and the state have gone down the road towards possible sale. If they buy it, it's a not issue, because it'll be forest land and parkland, it won't be able to be developed anyway. And if it's not, and the developer wishes to proceed with the litigation, nobody's been prejudiced. So, that's what the agreement is all about.
Okay, well, thank you for your touch and attention. I just need, I still want to have a document, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for your time, consideration.
Certain chance, thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that our next public business meeting will be Thursday, July 10th, 2014, at 5:00 in room 100 of the County Commissioners Building. I'd like to remind everyone that the Allegheny County Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing will be Thursday, the 10th, at 3:30, 701 Kelly Golarod, room 100. Remind everyone to look at the news release for the following issues: the fire hydrant flushing schedule, the local development council public meeting, Allegheny County Government schedule, and the Allegheny County Transit Safety Training. I'd like to thank everyone for participating in your government, and you all have a nice evening.